S U P 268, the owner, applicant, Atlantic Coast Pipeline LLC. The property information is tax map section 91, lot 60, containing an approximate 68 acres on the south James River Highway Route 56 in the James River, Manchester district. The zoning district is agriculture one. The request is for a special use permit. Atlantic Coast Pipeline A C P is asking the planning commission to recommend for a S U P for the tower, construction of a tower. Falling conditions are approved, are recommended to be approved or recommended to the board that all federal, state, and local regulations, ordinance, and laws be strictly adhered to. If the building permit is not issued within 36 months from the date of approval, then the special use permit shall be null and void. Existing trees along the northwestern property line and along the front of the property, as noted by the site layout that was submitted with the application, shall be maintained as a buffer for the life of the station. East of the station access road and east of the existing transco lines, trees planted and maintained after construction to provide a buffer and block visibility from the highway and adjacent properties. The tower must be designed and located within the property such that all or portion of the structure collapses, the structure will fall completely within the subject property lines. The tower shall not exceed the structural height of 195 feet with a lightning rod not to exceed four feet for a total height of 199 feet above ground, including foundation. The applicant shall provide FAA determination of no hazard to air traffic and submittal of the approved State Historic Preservation Office and National Environmental Preservation Act analysis reports, and submittal of certification by a registered Virginia professional engineer that the structure shall be designed and constructed to meet R C E I A dash T I A dash two 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 G as amended, class three exposure C standards. The applicant grants Buckingham County the right to locate without charge to the county space on the tower for Buckingham County 911 communication equipment at a beneficial height, and also grant to the county appropriate ground space for the necessary support equipment. In the event that any one or more of the conditions is declared void for any reason, such decision shall not affect the remaining portion of the permit, which shall remain in full force and effect, and for this purpose, the provisions of this are hereby declared to be severable. That any infraction of the above-mentioned conditions could lead to a stop order and a discontinuation of the special use permit if it be the wishes of the planning commission or of the board of supervisors. That the applicant understands the conditions and agrees to the conditions. As you all know, the planning commission and the board of supervisors did approve this S U P, it would be in 2018? Yeah. And I've reviewed it, I do not see any changes that, any change proposes other than the planning commission has increased the time limit from 18 months to 36 months. The applicant is here tonight to do a presentation to you. Mr. Emmett Thomas.
The information you have is predominantly the same thing we submitted when we did this about 18 months ago. The first slide is a picture of the site plan of the station, and shows the tower in the rear corner from standing looking in from Route 56. We get to comply with your requirements to send the design to your consultant city skate, and they approved the design and the breakaway and the 195-foot jump to collapse the tower. So we met those requirements. Round D. Get this thing up going there in. Okay. I don't want your slide to go in. Not my computer, so I'm not quite familiar with, but anyway, resident's stuff, you've got to pack it, and we can address any questions. There were a couple slides there just talking about makeup of the tower for construction. And as I indicated, that did need city skate design. You have a location picture there showing the general vicinity where the compressor station is. This will be inside the vicinity of the compressor station. And as was indicated earlier, should there be an opportunity for the county to utilize it for EMS, then we would work with you on coordinating access, you know, any kind of building that may go there to support your facilities. The next slide shows that basically the dimension in the wooded area in the back that it would be 195 feet per property. So that meets all of the collapse requirements. And then the next page kind of talks about the construction of the tower, and as this card indicated, the conditions of what class tower it is, what we have to meet to make that, meet the industry standard. So it will be under the limit of 200 feet, do not have to have light, bring the light on top, do not disturb the neighbors there. So we kept it under 200 feet for that particular purpose. So with that, it's really the same application we had in before, we just asked them to do that. So be glad to address any questions, or after the button hearing for a specific question you'd like them to address it, be glad to come up and do that then, so open it with that.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Oh, Mr. Thomas, we've been working with you for quite a while, and we had some concerns that there was faulty declarations, it was very stressful to people, that there wouldn't be any jobs. Can you address any of those issues that the citizens might be a little more?
Well, there will be a lot of construction jobs, and there are going to be nine permanent jobs at the station.
But they do have to pass drug tests before they can be on your property?
Sure, correct.
Okay.
And we do have one employee who is going to be the station manager, who has been assigned here, and he's living in the community now, so we do have the station managers here in the area.
And his children are in school here?
No, they haven't, they haven't moved yet. But he's renting a place here, where they get out of school, he's planning on bringing them here.
Okay.
But anyhow, there will be nine permanent jobs over this site. During construction, there will be quite a bit of jobs, as you've seen, there is a plan for a, you know, a worker site across the river from me that has been developed, so there will be folks there doing the construction. Somewhere between 18 months in the county to build the pipeline and work on the compressor station, so there'll be a lot of concrete gravel and services involved as well. So it's not a, you know, permanent forever facility, it's going to, it's a construction project, just something to what we're seeing in Bear Garden and all of those, once we're done, we're gone, but there will be nine permanent jobs there.
Okay.
Is that any other questions you may have?
Are there any plans in the work to maybe grasshopper the pipeline, put feedlots down?
Sure.
Wildlife?
Sure, that's.
I'm trying to touch on every basis that I've heard complaints about.
Okay, sure, that's addressed in our best station lands, whatever. So if folks have dug into that, there are, there will be grass right of ways, and we will work with each landowner on what type of activity goes back on that site. So the landowner wants a game plot, we have specific mixes that can go there, got through with the state. If they want alfalfa back, and there was alfalfa there, we'll work with them. If we put on corn back, then that's, you know, that's what we'll put back. So it can be farmed over. The only restriction is there can't be trees put back on it. We can't allow roots into, to grow into the pipeline control, because we have patrol warrants that run on the pipeline, and so anything but trees back on the right one.
Okay. And it's my understanding that this tower would be your communication with the station, with the outside world, and?
Yes, we operate on a microwave system. We have microwaves here in Bear Garden, and that's our, one of our mechanisms, not rely on the local phone service. We have the local phone service, but microwave is our communication. We have towers at the farm grill office, we have towers at Carter Mountain, Charles Field, and all these will communicate with each other, but we need the tower to get up to the mountain to communicate. We have one on top of the mountain, but this will go to our 24-hour control center, and will control the operations of the station, as well as, you know, we have valve sites along the way in the county that will have those towers that, you know, we need to coordinate with that microwave control. So that's our method of communication, it's 24-hour major, 24-hour center. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas, if I recall when we were debating and going with this initially, I know the tower is also for the company operations, but it also serves a safety issue too, doesn't it?
Yes.
It will double to any, anything that would happen at this plant with this tower being there, you can get the word out quicker and?
That's correct.
In case in need of a shutdown or whatever?
That's correct. And we, you know, we'll have a landline there, we'll have this, the microwave system, and you know, we also have something like that button. So those are three, three sources of backup for communication.
Right, but this is your primary?
It's the primary, that's what we use, the Dominion system. So when you think of it, it's like we have our own phone company. Our phones and phone grill are on our microwave system, and that's how we link to Richmond, and this will link to our control center in West Virginia. So all of our operations, major operations are our own, our own priority system, so we don't have to wait for telecom tech to show up, fix a problem. We have our own technicians, so we, in essence, we have our own private phone company, and that's pretty much what this microwave system relies for.
So if this, if we were not allowed of you to build this tower, yet we build a compressor station, we would actually be handicapping you?
Be handicapped.
Possibly putting the citizens at higher risk?
You're correct.
Okay, that's called a call, I just wanted to make a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I'm off the phone back, if my memory serves me. A resident came to the microphone, something to the effect of the Dominion had a meeting in the old building, and they would have engineers there showing two different sites for the compressor station. Wasn't that a smart real estate move to not tell anybody where you were going to put your compressor station?
You're talking about recently? I'm not aware of that, but anyway, we did, as in real estate, we did look at two different locations, and you know, as we've indicated, the location here is to interconnect with the transco with the pipeline. So those are the, the major considerations for that. I mean, they're our customer, we will interface with them, and we'll have the ability to tie into other stations that we have, the transco system. So that was one of the main concerns for this particular site.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Basically, from the first application to this application, nothing has changed, nothing's changed.
The only condition is that this one is that you would allow this.
I had a resident bring up the question, you had to pay a fee, right?
Yes, sir. I paid the application fee, right, the files.
That's all it is.
Okay. Anyone else? If you have any further questions out there, help me, yours, just let me know. Thank you.
Fourteen people signed up versus David Ball and Joseph Anthony Tafola.
Good evening, David Ball from District Three. Again, thanks for the confirmation, they do pay a fee, so I want to know whose interest was being represented by the commission in deciding to extend this time period to 36 months? Obviously, there's some problems that are going on with this pipeline, and right now everything's held up in court and federal agencies, and until it all breaks loose, you know, this could even take a couple more years. I know there's a functional timeframe to which they had planned to put this pipeline into action, and they've even tried to segment, they've been told they can't do that either. So until everything breaks loose, this is kind of a, you know, a waste of time, I guess you could say. But the problem is 18 months, if it takes another 24 months, you know, so what? That means they have to come back and apply again. They're not going to be able to build that compressor station in a day or two, and going through the process, they'll still be building that compressor station during the time that they're getting approved for that tower. The other thing is, we're not talking about any engineering problems, and these towers are pretty typical. And with regards to the microwaves, I know there are people that are concerned about the microwave radiation, and if you don't think it exists, well, the federal government had a real big issue when Russia was using microwaves on our people in government buildings, and also on other embassies, and there were effects that were caused to people's brains. In fact, they even had issues at the National Observatory from microwave radiation as a result of the Russians. So these are established facts, but they don't publish that, all the details of that clearly, because it has to do with a lot of high issues. Fact is that we're looking at another tower, and with the changes in the EMS regulations that are being put forth in Virginia, and the upgrades that have to be made to our systems, you know, what happened to putting a, one of our systems on their tower that's going to notify our people directly, not that it goes to their people, that somebody decides who they're going to send it out, but for our EMS people to actually have an immediate response notification from their tower coexisting at the same time with their information, I think in terms of saving lives and property, I think that is a critical issue, and that should be addressed, that should be a condition. We should have immediate notification and response, not something down the line later on when things have already happened. Thank you.
I live in Mayesville District, I just have a quick comment here. I would like the commission to consider not approving the tower, and it may be a little late by now, but for the compressor station at all, because I personally, as a resident, don't want the pipeline in the first place. It represents borrowing from our grandchildren to pay for energy we don't need and trashing the planet in return. We can't continue to balance the county's books with our grandchildren's inheritance. That's my comment.
In October of 2014, when we?
This is the name of the district.
I'm sorry. Irene Leach, and our property is in both James River and Mayesville. In October of 2014, when we first had the open house, one of the things that we were told was that this infrastructure was going to be monitored by fiber broadband, and it would be the most current and up-to-date, and it would always, that would, that would be the most, that's what we would do. By the time we got to this stage, the broadband had disappeared, and we were back to using last century microwave. Technology's changing really fast, and so is the law and the opportunity. The fact that we've got this 18-month renewal gives us an opportunity to take advantage of that. On March 19th, our governor signed a law that says that our investor-owned utilities, Dominion and A E P, can do a program where they could sell broadband. When we came, we asked about the broadband at the earlier stage, we were told that they were not allowed to sell it, and that's why it had disappeared. Well, they now have that opportunity coming their way, and it would give us the safest monitoring, the safest situation. It would also give Buckingham access to broadband, particularly giving people along the road the opportunity to have self-sufficiency in today's world. It seems that this 18-month opportunity to look at things again is a good thing, because it gives us a chance to, to look at what's going on. So switching to three years before you would have the opportunity to look at it again if it still isn't built, seems that it would, that would be a mistake. I'm glad we have the opportunity to consider this, and I hope that you will strongly encourage the company to give us the very best technology, the broadband. Thank you.
District Three, I was going to say basically what Mrs. Leach just said about waiting. First of all, we don't know whether, you know, there's lots of lawsuits out there. This pipeline may be denied. Also, I think Dominion has some sins in back of its, in its pocket, the coal ash in the James River. I, I have a problem with big companies not caring about the people that live close by, and I can think of the Flint, Michigan. I always think of Flint, Michigan, their elected officials did not care about those people. I'm hoping that you all care about people here in Buckingham County. But I just don't think we, you should approve this, at least at this point, I don't think you should ever approve it, but at this point, Mrs. Leach, I believe, has a really good point about technology improving every, every day. So thank you.
Corbin Robinson, District Four, in Anisville. I have a couple of things in response to Mr. Smith. I was at that meeting, it was a community advisory meeting, and they indicated, and it wasn't a matter of smart real estate, they made an error. I have a picture of what was displayed, is they were going to put the compressor station at mile marker 188, and in the application for tonight's action, it's in between 191 and 192. Questions are competence, and we saw the presentation Mr. Thomas made, that doesn't exactly increase it. I have to give that to you. And I have two conditions I'd like to see added to it, and again, I don't think this thing should be approved at all, it's done enough damage to the county already, and you have to measure that, you all have this invocation and prayer and all that. Well, how does that balance with what is going on with the people in the county? It's not fair, it's, it's tragic, it's ugly, and there's, there are plaques on the wall saying, who built this building? Well, if this thing is built, there's going to be plaques all over the place identifying who built the pipeline, and they're not going, it's not going to be pleasant. The first thing I'd like to add, condition 11A, all persons working for the A C P would be identified by name and social security number to the county staff for purposes of appropriate taxation and for comprehensive background checks. All persons means all persons who may be employed by a contractor or other entity working on the A C P. Buckingham County will share all this data with the following: United States Department of Labor, Virginia Department of Taxation, Virginia State Police, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. All persons working for A C P who have a photo identification badge at all times or working for the A C P. And they promised that when Judge Bleskin heard the appeal on surveys, and they didn't do it, they walked away from it. They think they're above the law, prove them wrong. Condition two, or the second condition I'd like to see added, 11B, all matters pertaining to the commitment to the community, this fraud that's being proposed by Dominion, will be introduced as part of this application and will be subject to further appearance prior to approval of this S U P. This unsolicited initiative to C T T C has significant potential impact on the county's competence plan, making the C T T C a part of this application, allow for it to receive appropriate review from all regulatory entities.
This Heidi Bear Two, and James River District. First, I would ask you to deny this, and I'm, I heard you ask your questions to Mr. Thomas, and I wish you'd go a little further, like for example, nine jobs, this is the first we're hearing of it, and what exactly are those nine jobs? Are they part-time jobs? I mean, I've, I've heard of one, and I've heard of maybe 35 for the entire pipeline, but nine for the compressor station? Please, ask more questions. That's just one. Ask more about that second site, why didn't they go to that, why didn't they choose that site? But tonight, we have this, this other issue before us. So I ask you to deny this, this tower. Why, why go for second, second rate broadband? They can do broadband now, that would serve the county. So, and broadband is the safest, you know, it's, it's what the military uses, it's, it's the safest means of communication. Wi-Fi, it's a target, you know, it's definitely a terrorist target for anyone else that's willing to shoot at the tower. We also ask that if you, if you do approve an S U P for this with broadband, that, you know, that you would also ask for the last mile provider of the broadband to be for businesses and residents along the pipeline. Again, this would enhance the safety and economics of self-sufficiency in Buckingham, and a standard eight-month time limit on this permit allows for flexibility for the county, as many things related to technology, cybersecurity are always changing rapidly. Please keep open the door to asking the A C P to include new technology or address new issues that may arise by making the S U P no longer than 18 months. Because the S U P was only 18 months, we can now easily take advantage of the recent bold encouragements from both, both the governor's new legislation and the Virginia Chamber of Commerce, to name a few conservative players to boost broadband in Virginia. This flexibility is very advantageous to the county, and by the way, to the A C P, who would benefit greatly now by installing broadband. I wonder at your eagerness to serve the industry, when your pledge is to represent the people of the county, this eagerness appears to be short-sighted and self-destructive. I ask you to do your duty and attend to the rights of the people, to enjoy your protection and good care.
Senator Commission, my name is J B Jones, and I reside in Cumberland County. I'm here to express my support for this special use permit for the microwave tower at the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Buckingham compressor Station. First of all, I must note that I am a longtime supporter of the pipeline project, including the compressor station. I've made my views known at several public hearings during the past year. I believe that A C P project, including the Buckingham compressor Station, will be a critical part of the Commonwealth's energy and economic future, and a critical part of the county's future as well. In recent months, the pipeline and the compressor station have encountered some unexpected judicial and regulatory delays. I believe these issues will eventually be resolved, and the project will once again move forward. I'm pleased that Dominion Energy I'm pleased that Dominion Energy shares this view as well. In fact, they say, they expect a resolution by the end of the year, and I certainly hope that's true. When that happens, work on the compressor station can get underway, and in order to function, the station will need the microwave tower. From a communications and operations standpoint, the tower is a critical component. The tower will provide around-the-clock monitoring for operations and safety, and if the need should arise, it will show system operators, it will allow system operators to step immediately to correct or fix or install operational problems. Unfortunately, the original special use permit from the tower has expired due to the construction delay. Other than that, nothing has changed. The new special use permit before you this evening is exactly the same as the one you and the Board of Supervisors previously approved in 2017. I'd also like to note that the compressor station site has received all the required state environmental approval. I've always been confident that the facility will be operated in a safe and environmentally protected way, and from my perspective, nothing has changed. So I urge you to vote for the special use permit. I believe that the obstacles that have blocked construction of the compressor station and lead to the expiration of the tower's original permit will be cemented. When that happens, the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Partners can move forward with work on the station, and from both safety and operational viewpoints, the microwave tower will be an essential part of the facility. Thank you for letting me express my views.
No. I wasn't going to say, but I am a retired Dominion employee. I've worked in the electric transmission department, and we work very closely with planning. And I'm talking about transmission right away versus this compressor station. But I strongly believe, and I hope y'all will vote, to have this approved. It's identical to what you had before, and I want to address some of the concerns of the planning commission. You were talking about how many employees or whatever, and I don't know whether you're aware that it's going to bring a million and a quarter taxes in each year. That's a heck of a lot of money without any school children to have to educate or whatever. That is money, you know, that is good for Buckingham. And when you're talking about jobs versus taxes, no, I'm disappointed maybe to a degree that there's not going to be so many jobs. But just like any big project, when you bring a god punch of people in, the Little Dirty Queen down in Dillon, or Food Line, and the Little Motel at Sprouse's Corner, all of those people are going to be having a lot more money too. So I think this helps. One of the other things, and I'm not sure exactly how this was done, but I understood some of the people were talking about two meetings that were held prior to any of this happening. And if those were planning meetings like we would have had in transmission, generally what you do is you get input from the local people. And like in transmission, somebody's aunt might be buried where we were going to bring the transmission line through. So if that's a situation, Dominion, and I think Atlantic Coast Pipeline will do everything in their power to try to work with these people. And you learn a lot when you have these meetings that are open to the public, to let people have that input. Bottom line is, I do understand that there are legalities that's been gone through, and that they must be passed. But I would ask for y'all to go ahead and approve the permit like it was before. And I think Buckingham would be very, very pleased with the amount of taxes that they will get from this and not have to be putting money out for school children, although I love the school children. But I think sometimes there's some misconceptions. Thank you for your time.
Buckingham County Administrator on the Tower Communication Tower Special Use Permit. I stated previously, over a year ago, that I objected to this tower placement. Now that 18 months have passed, I still object. This would be an invasion on my privacy and the quality of my life as it exists now. Having said that, I do understand that there is now the possibility that broadband can be provided nearby. If, and I say if, only if, because clearly I do not want any of this near me. But if this must be, then I want the best technology available to ensure my safety. You owe it to us to insist on this from Dominion. Thank you.
I'm in District Five. I'm opposed to the compressor station. I think most of you probably already know that. So any of my comments does not, do not support that in any way. I'm asking, as others have tonight, how can Dominion claim best-use technology any longer when fiber broadband is actually an option for them? This would provide the highest security. We don't have any broadband in Union Hill. I'm paying over $200 a month now to have any kind of reliable service. This is a great burden on me financially. And for others, they don't even have anything, nothing. So this is the very least, as Al just said, that you could provide for this neighborhood, who are bearing the greatest impacts of this compressor station. I object to increasing the time to 36 months, as has been stated before. A lot can happen in that time that can change things. Right now, there's a lot of litigation in court. This thing might not ever be built. I certainly hope not. I ask you to please start looking into the welfare of the people in District Five who will be impacted. It seems Dominion's welfare is considered above all. I ask you, how much money does it make it okay to poison people and to put this near their homes? If you cannot lead for those people you represent, and the resources that are your resources too, these are resources for all Buckingham, then who are you representing? Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank all of y'all for coming here, taking the time to look after some of us, even though some people don't, I think, don't show y'all the respect I think y'all should get. I want to say thank you.
I also want to bring up a point of Mr. McHerrick, you spoke of if this is, if they do bring this compressor station in, we need this so that we, I mean, I live around the corner from this place. It would be in my son's backyard, my other son's front yard. I'm not living down the road where I'm at. And I want to be safe. So if this is going to be built, then I think I should be safe. And if that's what's going to make me safer, I want it. My thing as well is, if I'm thinking right, this is actually for the tower. If the compressor station, whether it's built or not built, but if it's not built, they're not going to build a tower. They don't want a tower unless it's coming. So I mean, yeah, you can approve it, but, and that's fine, because that's what we need, you know, for safety. But if they're not going to build a compressor station, they're not going to build a tower either. So my thing is, I would like it for my family, for safety. And I'm sure y'all will do what you can to make sure of that. Thank you.
District Five, I appreciate Mr. McKerrick's concern for safety, and my understanding is broadband is much safer. So if this tower were not approved, broadband would come in, and she would have the greatest amount of safety, as long as the community would have access to 21st century technology instead of living back in the last century. I think you'd like to see the community go forward and not be left behind at this point. The statement about the two real estate parcels and how that was supposed to be a smart real estate move, that parcel, 140, however many acres it is that was first purchased, has the transco going directly through the middle of it. So Mr. Tom's idea that it was so important that the transco line be there, that does Ms. Gooden's comments about, I think she was worried that you were going to approve a broadband permit tonight. I don't think that's part of this. I think the only consideration is whether you approve the tower tonight. It appears to me that if you don't approve the tower, then broadband would be coming I think a comment that was made on February 19th, when we had the moral call for ecological justice, really says it well, and that, to me, is really all I need to finish up with. That is that, why are you relying on a corporation to bring these things to our community? Why is our government not taking care of its citizens? Thank you.
John LeDoy, District Six. I would like, first of all, I'm opposed to the proposed compressor station. If, which I hope it don't happen, it should have come, as far as the tower is concerned, I'd like to have the latest technology, broadband. We want to have, wanted to be as safe as possible for the ones who are living closest to this proposed compressor station. Broadband would be the latest of the technology. And I believe that you would also would like to have, to make it as safe as possible for our citizens, since we're part of the Buckingham community, to be safe. So rather than the old technology, we're looking forward to you to try to give us the latest technology. And also, like for you to stay with the 18 months on the, for the renewing of the certificate. Thank you.
When we discussed this thing initially, your first application, we talked about fiber optic and the possibility of running it inline. And there were some reasons why it wouldn't work, am I correct? Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. At that time, we were asked to pursue fiber to the Union Hill compressor Station area, and the carrier here is Sprint. Sprint has a fiber on 60, does not go down 56. We did have a meeting with Sprint, we brought that information back to both the Board of Supervisors as well. The number of clients to justify for them to put fiber and broadband there was not in the picture at the time. So we're not in the, ACP as chartered by the Federal Regulatory Commission is not in the fiber or broadband business. We're not allowed to do that. Now, to correct maybe some of the audience's thoughts on broadband, I shared with Mr. Wright here tonight the new law that was just put into effect on broadband. And it was in the legislature last year, and was tabled, and there was committees done through the summer, and actually, we interviewed, one of the committees from the legislature interviewed with Ms. Carter to talk to rural counties about their need for broadband. And just to, just to give you a definition of broadband versus microwave, broadband that we're speaking of here is more your Wi-Fi, your internet connection to connect your computer home. Our microwave system, it's not an adequate system. It's been around for years, but it's approved. It has proprietary communication, where we run the system with broadband, excuse me, with microwave. And that is a continued development process. It's still a good technology. Militaries still use it, we use it. The broadband is to get access for your Wi-Fi, if you will. The law, which you can have Mr. Wright checking on this, but the law, as Ms. Leach has talked about, is not for Dominion to be putting broadband in homes. The law would determine that the co-ops, the rural electric co-ops in Virginia serve most of the rural last mile customers. And they must either create an independent service provider, or have a third-party independent service provider, such as Sprint in this case, to take the service from either a power line Dominion has or A E P has. Our role in the new law is we were not to compete with the co-ops. So the co-ops were concerned, if you want the history of here, that if Dominion got into it, or an A E P got into it, they would not be competitive to do this. So there was a test case, or South Virginia Electric Co-op got to do some of this last year in the Waverine area. And they just made an announcement here, Ms. Carter can verify this in the county, that, you know, they got about $900,000 issued from the legislature to do some of this with broadband pilots. Dominion under the law will develop some pilots in some areas by July 1. But our role is to put fiber on our poles and make a connection to a third-party internet provider. So unless Sprint or somebody else wants to go into business in the Union Hill area, and that is not Dominion's area, that's basically the co-op's area, it's over at 56. If a co-op wants to test to the poles, that's what the law allows us to rent space to a co-op or to get to an independent provider. We don't have an independent provider knocking on the door coming to Buckingham County right now. Sprint is your local independent provider. So unlike what they're saying here, that Dominion can be ordered to do broadband, if you read the law, I left PM a copy here, our role is to be the intermediate to where we bring signal from a substation of communication technology. For example, there is one near Yoville, 03 miles, with 156. If it was our pole line, and we could work out with Sprint to attach to our pole line, and we have an agreement for going to use attachment, we would do that. However, running into your house, that has to be the independent internet provider. So we're talking apples and oranges here. The internet broadband is new technology to us from a Wi-Fi standpoint, but the microwave is a whole different animal from broadband. And it is a reliable technology. It's been around for years, and it's continued to be improved on. So we do have fiber on our electric transmission towers. We do that in the electric side of the business, where we use fiber and microwave, for example, between our garden and when we go into Fongor and other substations, we do use fiber. However, it's our own proprietary fiber, again, for safety and security. If it goes through Sprint or somebody else, you gotta wait for them, and they're taking this to respond, maybe days, weeks. We have our own proprietary system, and the safety issue is microwave, and that's our most reliable product. So it's fiber when we have it on our own system where we control it. So we're not restricting the community from broadband, but under the law, we're not allowed to do broadband at the end use level. So you could check that with Mr. Wright you've got here.
We've talked about this at first meeting, but for the information of the public, South Virginia Electric Co-op is starting a broadband program. Five years, it's five years, that's right, I already mentioned, it's five years, but they're starting a program that's hopefully connecting everybody in South Virginia. My concern, which is not the issue tonight, is that Dominion should jump on that from an electric company standpoint, so we can get it all over the county. But I understand that's a different question, and I shouldn't have brought it up, but I'm sorry.
That's right. Just to give you a quick answer, I mean, we're friends, we don't serve some of the counties, so, you know, it's co-ops' responsibility to put it on our poles or whatever.
Well, we're here to, as I've been part of the legal association. We're here to look at the microwave and person that or not, but...
Well, I think it's good for the public to understand. I think this dialogue is good. If you have other questions, they need to understand, because they're making false assumptions. If you have other questions, they need to understand, because they're making false assumptions, you know, we can bring broadband, and that law doesn't allow us to do that under this scenario, so they need to read the law a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am? Oh, Mr. Tomes.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe when we first visited this whole issue, and just so the general public know, our normal timeframe is thirty-six months, and we would have already been in the tower building business if you hadn't have been held up by all the labor laws. And so that is why the planning commission decided to go from eighteen months to thirty-six months, is that correct, as far as everybody's remembrance?
Yeah, just a bit technical, correct? I think you said thirty-six months to start with, and you really meant eighteen. The original permit was for eighteen.
Right, but as a general rule, we grant a thirty-six.
And?
And.
It happened through the law, so.
For everybody else, it's thirty-six.
And we hope to be breaking ground by the way we have.
We had hoped that this would be a done deal, so we backed it up, so that we're not giving him any extra time than anybody else, just so everybody's clear. And that's all I got to say to that.
Can you, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Can you address the question that the people in the community who are closest to the, from a safety standpoint, to the station, how are they going to get notified first?
That's part of the protocol, we're working with the county staff right now, we're having meetings, working, and we have to have an operational plan by the time our plant's in operation, so we're in the process, and we've been doing these meetings for over six months with the county staff on EMS, we've been meeting with the fire chiefs and the rescue corps, and focused on working a detailed plan of how notifications would go, so that is in the works, and we are obligated under the law to have an operational plan submitted to the local at the time basis of effect.
And it would be an immediate response.
Yes.
They're actually looking at an independent line for going to do that, so that nothing would tie anything up, but only for that use.
And you have a dial-back system that a lot of localities don't have, so you have a system that's able to make notifications that way, so there'd be several forms of notification or whatever, so that's being coordinated with the county EMS. Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were really looking out for the, for the citizens more than we are getting due credit for.
Yeah, the reason I wanted you to re-talk about those issues, because we have talked about them before, and the whole nine-one-one system, we're hoping to get.
Rebacked.
Going on to.
Going off of that. Part of the deal is to improve some of the nine-one-one callback systems, so that's in the operational plan as well, so. I think there's a lot of things that haven't been brought up to the public about safety that they need to know about, but we're in the planning stage with county staff, so, you know, we're, as a corporate citizen, we're here to make it as safe as possible, and I know that may not sound good to the crowd, but we don't want any incidents, that we want to be able to meet all the requirements, you know, what we have here in the community to be a safe operation.
I don't have anything else.
Well, thank you, and I'll, you know, I'll be glad to talk any more broadband, but it's pretty much black and white, that, you know, unless the co-op or Sprint wants us to do something there, we're not really obligated to step in their territory, so if that clears up what you're asking, ma'am.
Yeah, one, it's a good question about taxes. I don't know what they are, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, but I know, I know they go down over time, it's not something that.
They ramp up and.
They ramp up, and then they go down, and then they end, so it's not, we understand that.
Well, they don't exactly end, but it goes down with.
Things depreciate. I mean, it's.
Just like you're all with Transco Wiggins now, so, you know, thank you.
However, we found at Fair Garden that they don't, when they do improvements, it goes back up.
Exactly, you do cap improvements, it goes back up. So the figure quoted, I think, and Ms. Carter's got this, that till we get to construction, what we ramp up in full load is somewhere around a million and a quarter a year to the camp for the value we have in Buckingham.
I'd say reassess it like they do our land.
Could be, you know, state reassesses these, so, you know, it could very well go up. Thank you.
Okay.